Okay. Town of Log Lane Village Agenda Regular Meeting, Board of Trustees, September 18th, 2024. The time is 6:40 PM, 202 Birch Street, Log Lane Village, Colorado 80705. At any meeting, the potential exists that an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, Section 4, to discuss such things as litigation, personal matters, property transactions, conferences with attorneys, security matters, or any protected information may be called. Regular meeting. Comments from the public are welcome. At the beginning of each meeting, comments that are no longer than five minutes will be heard following the presentation of the staff or the petitioner. Please wait until the mayor recognizes you and state your name and address for the record. Public comments or citizens' concerns. The Board of Trustees will make no decision nor will they take action except to direct their appropriate town employee. Are there any citizens' complaints? No? Okay. Go ahead and approach.
Hi, I'm Jody Walker. I am running for Morgan County Commissioner, District 1, which includes Log Lane. For our thought, everybody should know the person on the ballot for those of you that don't already know. I live in Wiggins. I live in Wiggins. I also run Kids of Their Best. So we've done a lot of work with Log Lane. I don't have a specific platform because I don't feel that people should have a frequency agenda. I want to do education and transparency. A lot of people in the county don't understand that the commissioner's elections are at large and that everyone gets to vote. So I'm trying to help people understand that. I want to push for a strong economic base because everything that commissioners deal with is economics. And I want to have transparency in taxes. You may not know where every dime goes, but you should darn well know at least where the big buckets are. I think the way it's sure in this district is super important because Log Lane works very closely with the county. And when I'm good on the log hand side, I can't say that the county has been exceptionally nice. So you guys need somebody that's going to be nice. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll give everybody a card, tweet, email, call me sometime. Take a sign in my store. Really? No, because I was afraid to.
I know, I would still agree with you.
Okay, we should probably do full disclosure. I am running as a Democrat because there were six people running on a Republican ticket and the caucus ended up being an absolute. Well, it was just not a friendly day out today. So strategy wise, there was no way that, I mean, even some of the other people got in on that ballot. So if you jump on the other slide, there was an open, there was a wide, huge open vote. So yes, I would be happy to live in the white.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody else?
Nope. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good one.
Bye.
You will do roll call, please. Here.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Onto the consent agenda. I will read line items one through three. Line item one, approval of August 21st, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Line item two, approval of August 1st, 2024 through August 31st, 2024 payments. Line item three, approval of payments made from September 1st through the 15th.
All of our pay be under trustee pay and not just Alex? It should have been all the rest of us too, right? It's trustee pay. It's got Naomi's on there, but it's only got Alec on ours. And normally, all of our names are listed.
I think it's because all of you are our director of charge except for.
Oh, okay. She's still on there. That's not anywhere else in here. Whether we're direct pay or not, it should have been on here as a bill. Missing $1,500. Missing $1,500. Whether it's a bill or not, all of our trustee pays not listed on your own Alex's. And she said, well, maybe it's because they're everybody else's direct. Everybody else's direct pay, but it should still be on here as a bill and it's not, not on there anywhere.
So correct me if I'm wrong, these are just checks.
Checks. Yes.
Yes. These are just checks.
Oh, okay.
So we're not missing $1,500.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to say, I don't know if it, if it would add to the complication. There are multiple options here. You, you can pass as it, you know, you can put a vote to the consent agenda as is. You could pull a specific item off. You could also make a motion to, to say, oh, this, this is just approving the checks. If you, if you care about that specificity, I'm not necessarily saying you need to. I just wanted to say, you kind of have multiple options here if, if anyone is uncomfortable.
Anybody have some questions? If I can get a motion.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Roll call. Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Agent?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay, onto the reports. Mayor's report. This weekend, we have our spring clean, or not a spring cleanup, our fall cleanup. We had a pretty good turnout for when we did it in the spring. I believe now that we have our own trash services that we could do this twice a year.
What are we gonna do if it rains like crazy like it's supposed to be this weekend? Are we just gonna reset it? Or are we gonna try and deal with it in the rain? Because it is supposed to, it's 93% chance of rain all day Saturday and possibly rain all day Sunday too.
I thought it was just supposed to be cold. I honestly haven't looked at the weather.
No. But yeah, it's supposed to rain. I was watching the news this morning tomorrow.
If it's pouring down, we are probably gonna have to reschedule it. Or see what we get. I don't know. What do you feel, Mike?
Stuff will be all good. Doesn't keep pouring down, right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not afraid of nothing.
I'm not either, but you know, if we're gonna stand out there in the rain and people aren't gonna wanna bring their stuff because they are.
If, we'll just have to play it by ear. If, with the weather, if it's light enough and the guys feel all right, and we have some people, it's better to get the few that do show up versus, you know, rescheduling and then it's gonna get colder. So. Yeah. And then. What else do we have coming up? Event, that, that's the one event that we have for this month. And then, of course, we will start discussing and putting together what we'll wanna do for next month's event, which is gonna be for our Halloween that we do. And we also have the Meet the Candidate on October, Wednesday, October 23rd. And that is going to be at 6:30 PM. And that will be at 109 Main at the community building. And I believe that is pretty much what all we have going on for my report. So we can go on to the Conservation Trust.
The Conservation Trust report as of September 18th, 2024, our beginning balance as of August 1st, 2024 was thirty thirty thousand one hundred sixty-four thousand thirty.
No, no. Thirty thousand one hundred sixty-four.
One hundred sixty-four with thirty-eight cents. Thank you. We had two credits in total of eight thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars with twenty-three cents. So we had no debts.
So no debits.
No debits. So our Indy balance was thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and two dollars with sixty-one cents.
Thank you. Treasures report. Pete? I don't even think it's on. Oh, okay.
Eighty credits totally.
Okay. Public safety. Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to find the. And Public Works. Okay. And we do have our attorney, Dan Finley. Hi, Dan.
Howdy. Yeah, not a whole lot for me. Obviously, the election is coming up, so I'll be working with Deb and Lupita on, on just whatever is needed for that. I do hope to have kind of a more concrete update, at least by this time next month, perhaps ahead of time, in which case I'll just send an email to you all on just some of the, the Ian properties and kind of our plan of attack there. I know there's been some progress through the courts, but there's some kind of next steps, whether it be foreclosure or some degree of sort of condemnation, judicial proceedings. We're kind of working through that right now, but I'll, I'll have an update for you all soon on that.
Okay, thank you. Onto new business. Motion to approve, disapprove table. Second reading of ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance of the Town of Log Lane Village granting a gas and electric franchise. I'm sorry, I have to go back. I forgot the citizens' complaints. So. It looks like there is, and there are suggestions and one. So we have three suggestions and one complaint. So the first suggestion is from Mike Flynn at 209 Balsam Street. Excel needs to add a secondary feed to our town. We are currently fed from only a single source at present. A radial feed. This is certainly below an unacceptable service level in 2024. Our community sat dark for 24 hours on 12th to 13th. At, oh, August 12th and 13th, sorry. While power was being supplied to subscribers within 1,000 yards of town hall. This unreliability will negatively affect our community over the long term. Also, a suggestion, another suggestion Mr. Flynn has is the electronic submission page for this form is no longer available on the Log Lane Village website. This form was available before recent website update. The electronic form needs to be available, so handwritten submissions like this one are minimized. The ability to attach photos is also a must-have feature. Okay, so that's something for them. And then another suggestion for Mr. Flynn is. All right, well, I believe it's all the same. So Town of Log Lane Village, PSCO Gas and Electric Franchise Agreement draft from June 25th, 2024, Section 1.1, defined terms, utility service refers to the sale of gas and/or electricity to residents and further as well as delivery of gas to residents. Why does this not state delivery of gas or electric to residents? This omission should be corrected or explained in the document. Thank you.
I'm actually something for Excel to take care of.
I'm not done. I got one more complaint. The street light located at the east side of Route 144 in Frontage Road is still not illuminating. ID tag thirty-seven slash eighty-five. I have a photo from June 26th with ID tag taken at the time to identify pole, which was not functional at time. In fact, it, in fact, had been non-functional for at least one week. This safety device has been non-functional for ninety-plus days at this point. This condition had been reported at the time in late June. Yes. On 144.
Sorry, age problem.
So Excel was notified.
Yeah, and I can chime in a little bit here. I mean, I'm happy to sort of investigate any of these or, or Mike, if it makes sense for you and I to connect. Certainly, the franchise agreement that you guys are about to have the second reading on contemplates all of these situations and has sort of mechanisms by which things can be reported. And Excel does have obligations to fix or make sure that they're supplying in terms of the contract. I'm unaware of sort of any sort of sustained problems with Log Lane Village, but, but that doesn't mean there aren't any. Just please let me know if there are. And if these complaints specifically identified here, you know, are accurate or not being addressed quickly. My understanding generally is that Log Lane and Excel have a pretty good relationship and things do get done quickly. But if that's not true, then, then that's on me to kind of lean, lean where I can or, you know, enforce the contract where I can if you guys do end up approving it. But I just want to mention that, that all of that is contemplated in the contract and there are kind of mechanisms and remedies that, that are enforceable if, if you're not getting the service that you need.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and now that I've read those suggestions and complaints, move on to the new business. Line item one, motion to approve, disapprove table. Second reading of ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance of the, of the Town of Log Lane Village granting a gas and electric franchise to Public Service Company of Colorado. Its affiliate affiliates successors and assigns the right to use the towns, to use the streets within the town to furnish, sell, transmit and distribute gas and electricity to the town and to all residents of the town, granting the right to acquire, construct, install, locate, maintain, operate and extend into, within and through the town, all facilities reasonably necessary to furnish, sell, transmit and distribute gas and electricity within and through the town and fixing the terms and conditions thereof.
Well done, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance of the Town of Log Lane Village granting a gas and electric franchise to Public Service Company of Colorado. Its affiliate successors and the signs the rights to use the streets within the town to furnish, sell, transmit and distribute gas and electricity to the town and to all residents of the town, granting the rights to acquire, construct, install, locate, maintain, operate and extend into, within and through the town, all facilities reasonably necessary to furnish, sell, transmit and distribute gas and electricity within and through the town and fixing the terms and conditions thereof.
One second. Roll call. Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. Line item two, motion to approve and approve, disapprove. Sorry. Table, CAMCA Training Class for Lupita Court Basics on November 1st, 2024 in Evans for fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve CAMCA Training Class for Lupita Court Basics on November 1st, 2024 in Evans for fifty dollars.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Yes.
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 Line item three, motion to approve, disapprove table, SIRS workers' compensation, property and liability insurance.
I'll make a motion to approve SIRS workers' compensation, property and liability insurance. One second.
Roll call.
Naomi?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. Line item three, motion to approve, disapprove table, the budget presentation per CRS 21-25-1211.
That's what we're working on.
That's what we're currently working on right now. So let me go ahead and we need to table that because we're not done.
I'll make a motion to table the budget presentation for CRS 21251211.
One second.
Okay, roll call. Yes.
Hey, real quick, I would maybe just amend that motion if, if you guys want to. Hey, real quick, I would maybe just amend that motion if you guys want to to specify if you want to talk about it at your next regular meeting or to a date uncertain. If you just table it, it would have to be on the next agenda. That's fine, but just if you prefer to say until a date uncertain, then you can bring it back whenever the time is right.
Um. So yesterday we had a special meeting where we were, got a majority of it done. Is there a way that we can amend it to put it below so we can finish out yesterday's?
Yeah, in that case, like, would you think you're needing maybe a potential another special meeting in the interim? Or at what point would you view it being finalized?
We would because we need to get this done before our next regular session.
So then I would just say, let's table it to a date uncertain. And then whenever that date becomes certain, you're free to put it on the agenda if that makes sense.
No, I was hoping that you would tell me that we could go ahead and finish this out tonight.
Yeah, if you want to move it to just later in the agenda, that's fine, too.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, then I would just, I wouldn't table it. I would just say we are moving this down on the list. And you wouldn't even need a motion for that.
Okay. So for line item four, we are going to go ahead and move it to just to the end of the list, or is that?
Yep, it'd be discussed later at this meeting.
Okay, to be discussed later on at this meeting. Onto line item five. Motion to approve, disapprove table. Hiring a certified building inspector for properties on Poplar and Linden.
I'll make a motion to approve hiring a certified building inspector for properties on Poplar and Linden.
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Line item six. Motion to approve, disapprove. Table hiring a chief of police.
I'll make a motion to approve hiring a chief of police.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion passes. Line item seven, motion to approve, disapprove table, hiring altitude tech solutions.
I'll make a motion to approve hiring altitude tech solutions.
Oh, second.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Line item eight, motion to approve, disapprove table, purchasing a building kit from Menards for the trash trucks.
I'll make a motion to approve purchasing a building kit from Menards for the trash trucks.
Oh, second.
Actually, that was just yesterday, so we don't have to. We can remove that line item eight from the agenda, correct, Dan?
Yes, if it's, if it's applicable, you can just say this item is no longer, you know, needing discussion or a vote, so it can be removed.
Line item eight is no longer needed on this agenda as it was, or a vote as it was voted on at the special meeting. Line item nine, motion to approve, disapprove table, renewing the membership dues for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Oh, okay.
On here. It's the Deverly Town Clerk, Town of Wiggins.
Where?
Yeah, it does seem to be right at the top. Three Town Court, Town of Wiggins. Right, change.
Oh. She had everything else crossed off, but she. So she'll have to. I'm assuming she's going to need to reach out to them so that they can update that.
Yeah, I do think you guys could still approve it in concept. You know, you could say, yes, we approve this expense, but the paperwork needs to be corrected if you want, but yes, I agree that that does need to be corrected.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve renewing the membership dues for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks for two hundred and ten dollars with a updated and corrected renewal form.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Line item ten. Motion to approve, disapprove table, the interview of judge. I don't know what we're. I don't think. I don't, I don't believe we need line item ten either.
Yeah, I would agree. You've interviewed them. If there's a decision to be made.
Right.
That can be on a future agenda.
Okay, so we will be removing line item ten as we no longer, will not be taking a vote at this moment, so. Line item eleven. Motion to approve, disapprove table, the search for a new auditor.
I'll make a motion to approve. Searching for a new auditor. One second.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Line item twelve, motion to approve, disapprove table. Brief update regarding playground and Colorado Health Foundation. I don't.
I don't know why it's on there either, because didn't we give?
We did that last.
Lupita before.
So we will.
Yeah, that one continued taking up.
We need to remove line item twelve. Line item thirteen, motion to approve, disapprove table, Morgan County United Way Housing Land Use Consulting Grant Writing Letter of Support. Did you guys read that agreement? It's behind what? I didn't hear you.
It's on the back of her international institute.
Oh.
I don't know, I've heard of this going both ways. Dan. I've heard of writing a countywide or area-wide grant as can be a good thing, but I've also heard of it going bad, too. So I mean, would this, is this looking like something that would be a good thing for our town? Or?
Yeah, I mean, good question. I don't really want to advise you on the merits of if it's good or bad. I mean, that's for you guys to kind of decide. To me, I'm understanding the vote as, do we want to provide such a letter or not? And I do not, just from like an objective standpoint, I don't think providing a letter in and of itself is good or bad. It's simply, do you believe in the cause and do you want to support that cause? And then if the answer is yes, then the letter is easy enough to provide. If the answer is no, then the answer is no. Did I explain that? Okay, I'm happy to.
I mean, if anything, it shows that Logan is willing to support that type of thing with the county.
Well, in that grant, if they're going to get a grant for grant writing support, that's actually a pretty good thing because, like you said, I wanted to look for a lot more of these grants. A lot more stuff that we can, that our town can possibly do to improve the things here. Like I said, laugh, ha ha, let the federal government pay for it, but you know what I'm saying? So actually, if we could get that grant, if that's going to support us, too, that would really support the ability to get new grants in here because of the grant writing I have learned. That's all kinds of a lot of work.
But I don't think it doesn't mean that we couldn't continue to do some of our own.
Well, yeah, no, but I mean, this is just like the grant is just the grant writing support. That's what is her name, Lupita? That lady that's helping us with the grant writing support for the park grants and stuff. Basically, that's what that is.
I'm going to make a motion to approve Morgan County United Way Housing Land Use Consulting and Grant Writing Letter of Support due next week.
Oh, second. Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay. Now can we go back to line item?
We visit the budget item, yeah.
The budget? Okay.
And if you need to just discuss, you can start with discussing, but then when and if there's a motion ready to be made, you can do that then.
So why can't we table it for
wait?
unspecified date. Special meeting and then vote on.
We can do.
Table the, table the, our vote on the budget for an unspecified date. And then when we complete it at our and then vote on.
And that could be either at a special meeting or at a regular meeting, although I do think there is a statutory deadline, so you may need to call a special meeting, but certainly you can, you're not forced to vote on it tonight, if that makes sense.
I just know that Tuesday won't work anymore. So. We can go tomorrow, we can do it. We can either do it tomorrow. I don't know what everybody's schedule looks like. If not, we could move it to next Wednesday and that still gives us time, correct? Because it has to be by the thirtieth? The Wednesday work?
We just want to table it for undetermined and then determine that afterwards.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Are we doing Wednesday at five o'clock?
Wednesday you can do.
I'll make a motion to table the budget presentation for CRS twenty-one, twenty-five, twelve eleven per undetermined time.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay. Is there any old business to discuss? Any new business? I can get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting seven twenty-two PM.
Oh, second.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.
Thanks. Good to see you all.
Thank you, Dan. See you.
See you.